Okay, we don't have any monitors, so we're doing it on the go from our friends at AGP. Welcome, everyone. Today's Thursday, June 28, 2018. This is a special meeting of City Council, starting at 6:00 PM. We're located at Morro Bay Community Center, so any of our viewing audience at home who wanted to come down, we're not at the Vets Hall, we're at the community center, and that's at 1001 Kennedy Way. For the record, we do have a quorum. All members of council are present. We'll call the meeting to order, and this will be a review of the proposed water and sewer rate increases and the authorization to submit the Water Infrastructure Financing Innovation Act, which is WIFIa loan application. This is a special meeting. We have this item on the agenda. I'm looking out in the audience. And we do have speaker slips over there, is that right, Lori? Okay, so we have speaker slips over on the agenda. I think we've got handouts over there. As I understand it, we've gone through a little bit of this and some other special meetings where we've gone ahead and done our presentation, and then following the presentation, as we would any regular agenda item, we'll go through council questions and then public comment. And I was just going to go ahead and follow that format tonight, but looking through the audience, just to see kind of a hands-up polling of, you know, what everybody's interests were. So we're going to go through public comment. We'll do that after the presentation, okay? So with that, I'll turn it over to staff. And Scott, are you going to start us off on the introduction?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much, Mayor. Council members, Scott Collins, City Manager, and I have with me Alex Handler of Bartle Wells Associates, as well as Public Works Director Rob Leivik, the Wharf Program Manager, Eric Casares, Finance Director Jen Callaway, and City Attorney Joe Panone, as well as our Deputy Clerk, Lori. So today, just wanted to give a brief overview of the project and then turn it over to Alex to discuss the rate study and rate analysis. And then turn it over to council to ask any clarifying questions, go to public comment, and then there are some, there is some direction that we will be seeking from council at the end of the presentation. So just for a bit of background on the Wharf project, the existing wastewater treatment plant needs to be rebuilt. It was constructed in the 1950s. The last major upgrade to this facility was in 1984. As has been noted numerous times, it doesn't meet capacity needs, nor is it sufficiently passing regulatory permit requirements, nor is it designed to do so. The Regional Water Quality Control Board just yesterday issued the time schedule order for the city of Morro Bay, and so we have, in essence, five years from this date to complete the project and to be up and running in order to avoid facing potential fines. So that gives you just kind of a brief background on the actual facility that we're looking to replace. As has been noted numerous times, the treatment plant cannot be rebuilt on the existing site. It's located in the coastal flood plain, tsunami inundation zone. In 2013, the Coastal Commission unanimously denied the development permit to rebuild near the current site. The current location is inconsistent with Coastal Commission policies and other provisions of the Coastal Act, as well as our local coastal program. As a result of that, the community and council spent significant time looking at alternative sites that would, in essence, take care of any coastal concerns, as well as help build a new facility that meets our modern requirements. Seventeen sites were evaluated. In the same time period, we experienced a significant drought, and so recycled water became a very key consideration for this project, and numerous options were evaluated. Ultimately, the preferred location was picked for the South Bay Boulevard near Highway One, and the preferred site, as well as recycled water component, meet the city goals for the Wharf project. So that just gives you a brief background on the project, and I want to note that the city has hosted a couple meetings in the last week. We had the community forum on Saturday, really well attended, a lot of really good questions were asked, really good engagement with the community. And then we had a tri-joint meeting with PWA, CFAC, and Wharf CAC on Monday. Great turnout attendance, a lot of questions upon Alex's presentation on the rate analysis, and good feedback on some of the questions that we'll pose for City Council tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Alex to kick off the presentation on the rate analysis.
Thank you, and nice to see everybody again.
Alex, if you can focus a little bit on the microphone for everybody? Thank you, appreciate it.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you, thanks, appreciate it.
Last time, I was not quite talking into the mic also, but so to give a little background on the rate study, we were just here, you know, back in 2014, 15, working with the city, and this, out of that process, the city adopted five years of water and sewer rates, phasing in gradually over five years. Those rates were designed for a couple of things. One was your water enterprise hadn't had any rate increases in the prior 20 years. You were out of compliance with your debt covenants, with the Central Coast Water Authority bonds, so you needed water rate increases just to stabilize the finances. And also, those rate increases were designed to phase in funding for an ongoing capital program. You've got a lot of old infrastructure, some of it hadn't been addressed, and the goal was to get a pay-as-you-go funding stream, so you can do high priority projects, as the city identified. The other thing that was, there's, I know a little source of confusion, was at that time, there was the desire that the rates would help support funding for a new water reclamation facility, because obviously, it was known that you needed to do this at the time. When we look back at what the numbers were, those rates weren't adequate to fund what is now known about the facility. The prior rates were sized for funding a $75 million facility, but funding the city's 75% share of that, under the old assumption that Cayucos would be participating as a 25% partner. So really, we're talking about the prior rate supporting $56 million of projects at the end of the day. And that's, that initial cost estimate, no one ever put out there that was the final cost of that estimate. It was a very conceptual planning level, just based on looking what maybe some other facilities out there had cost historically. Couple of things about that, in that prior rate study, we evaluated, you know, what if you had to do with bonds or state revolving fund loan financing? At the time, state revolving fund loan financing was widely available and a lot easier to get than it is today. And so the kind of collective decision was, hey, let's assume we have a realistic chance of getting it. We'll assume the whole facility will be financed by these very low-rate state revolving fund loan, revolving fund loans. And that project also assumed that the recycled water component of the facilities would be a future Phase II that wasn't even part of the rate study. The good news is that the rates, I look back at the old cash flow projections, they were pretty spot-on to where you are today. They did their job in strengthening your water and sewer utilities' financial condition. However, we, as we now know, with the project coming in, the actual cost estimates in hand from the design-build process, that the old rates are not adequate to fund this. And we ran some numbers last year. I know there's a higher project cost estimate, and I think alarmed some folks with what the rates looked like. Well, we now have numbers in hand, so we updated all our projections to, and want to report on what the findings are here. One thing I want to say out of the get-go is, just to be very clear, what's being proposed is not tinkering with your existing rates. You're about to go into the fourth year of the five years of those rate increases, so we're just leaving those rates as they are, and we don't see any additional increases for the regular rates needed over the next five years, other than what's already been adopted. What we are proposing, and working with the Blue Ribbon Commission and staff, is a separate surcharge for the water and sewer portions of funding the debt service associated with the new water reclamation facility. So these would be separate surcharges, completely separate line items, levied either on the monthly bill, or it could be on property taxes, although that doesn't sound like it's quite as popular as I initially thought it was going to be. So what we did was, you know, develop some independent, objective financial projections to evaluate what do these surcharges need to look like to generate adequate revenues that you can go out and secure the financing for the project. And we looked at a number of different scenarios, and they were honed over time, and I just want to cover them real quickly, because really, I think two of them are up for council input at this stage of the game. One is the base case scenario, where we are assuming that WIFIa is going to fund 49% of the project costs at a favorable interest rate. You were one of 12 communities nationwide invited to submit the full application, and that's a great savings in terms of reduced debt service. But you don't have any other, you do have a small SRF planning loan that was awarded, but SRF is not committed to funding the rest of the project construction at this stage of the game. With the recycled project, your whole project, and with WIFIa, I think SRF is going to look very favorably upon you, but they have given absolutely no commitments for anything. So we're assuming that in addition to the WIFIa financing and the little over $10 million of SRF planning loan, that you would be using bond financing for the rest of the project. And the base case scenario also assumes that there'd be no surcharge kicking in this upcoming fiscal year, but the next fiscal year, you'd levy the whole surcharge. The second scenario is very similar to the first one, but it's a phase-in scenario, where instead of levying the whole surcharge, we'll call it front-loading, next year, you'd gradually phase it in over a few years to maximum levels. The main difference between those two, though, is if you levy the surcharge a little more front-loaded, you're instantly starting to generate more cash flow for the project, more cash funding. The more cash funding you contribute, the less debt service you need to take on, the lower your debt payments are going to be in the long run, and the lower your rate increases for the surcharges would need to be in the long run. So that's the difference, but it's not a huge difference, as you'll see in a moment. We also ran a couple of other scenarios. One was a scenario assuming that you did get some additional state revolving fund loan financing at very favorable interest rates, and what would that, how much savings could you expect to get out of that? And the final one was, what if there was a no-water recycling scenario? What if we just did a wastewater-only project, eliminated any, all the projects for recycled water? Under that scenario, the project costs do come down by about $20 million, which is significant, but on the other side of the equation, you lose your access to WIFIa financing, your access to state revolving fund loan financing, and so we assumed it would just be bonds that you would have to do. And it came out pretty close to a wash at the end of the day. To cut to the chase on what dollar amounts we're looking at, because I know there's been a number of charges bandied out there, and from our, what we showed people a year ago, it was quite a bit higher, but we're looking at a total surcharge on top of your existing rates of about $41 per month, under the base case scenario, or $44 per month, under the phase-in scenario. Again, the phase-in would start lower than that, and would phase into 44, so by the fourth year from now, you'd be at the full level. When we look at what would happen with SRF, that saves you about $7 a month compared to the base case scenario. So it's very advantageous if you can get more state revolving fund loan financing, and I know the city's working aggressively to do that. And then the no-recycling scenario, interestingly, without the recycled water project, all 100% of the costs are going to be loaded on the wastewater side, so there'd be no shared cost. So it made the surcharge higher than if it was under the base case scenario, but at the same time, you wouldn't need to implement your last year of already adopted rate increases. So you have a little bit higher surcharge on the wastewater, but your water rates would be lower than where they would go under normal circumstances, so you end up, according to our, you know, all the assumptions we built in, about $1.50 per month savings. But then again, if you get state revolving fund loan financing, that savings may go away, so it could be pretty close to a wash at the end of the day. The other thing people in this community, or the numbers are being put out there for us, hey, what's our total bill going to be? Aside from the surcharge, what are we going to pay for water, sewer, and all the surcharges when all is said and through? And that's what this slide shows you, under the base case scenario, which is again, front-loading the charge. The total charge goes to $191 per month for water and sewer, and for the water and sewer water reclamation facility surcharges.
It's me, but that's for an average customer using five units. It would be less if you use fewer units, correct?
That is correct. And that's what we're using for a typical, single-family residential bill, a typical home. When we look at your water data, we see that average water use, single-family, over the past year, has been about four and a half or 4.6 units per month. So what we're using here is five units, is kind of a representative sample bill, but certainly, probably about 2/3 to, you know, 70% of your bills are at or below five units. So most folks are going to be below this 191 level, but there are certainly folks who use more, or maybe in the summertime, they're using more, in the wintertime, they're staying below those levels. So we're trying to give a representational example, and I'll show you the impacts on, you know, single-family bills for a whole range of customers a little later in the presentation. But so $191 a month under the base case, and under the phase-in scenario, the charges would phase in, you know, nothing next year, then $17, then 30, then 44, so they phase in over three years. This starts a little lower, but the total combined bill would end up a little bit higher after the full phase-in at $194 per month, for what we're calling that typical, single-family home with five units of monthly water use. Again, you know, 2/3 to 70% of your bills are at or below that level. In terms of what the project costs are, now that the design-build proposals are in hand, and you've selected a team to move forward, the dollar amount works out to be, for the whole project, $126 million. Of that, there's a little sliver that's being held back in reserves or some unanticipated costs that you may incur as things are moving on. So what we're looking at in our financial projections is funding a project that's a little less than $123 million. Most of it, about almost $75 million, is the water reclamation facility itself, but Eric from Corolo Engineers has kind of gone through an analysis of allocating cost to water versus sewer. We'll show you in a minute. The conveyance facilities, if you build a treatment plant, you have to build a pump station pipeline to get the wastewater to the new plant at its proposed site. It's about $26 million. You also have some off-site recycled water facilities, in addition to the additional treatment levels that would be needed at the treatment plant, and then there's some, you know, general program implementation, et cetera. That just shows you a breakdown of the project costs. In terms of how this money would be spent, rolling out over the next five years, you've already spent about $5 million as of today. This upcoming fiscal year, as part of design-build, you'd be going full bore on the design. And then, there'd be some additional design costs and soft costs in future years, but a lot of the main design for this facility happening this next year, with construction happening in years, fiscal year 2019, '20, and the following couple of years. So it's a lot to do, and it's going to take a few years to work through this project. It's a big project. In terms of the apportionment, I was mentioning, Corolo had gave a good faith breakdown, because we want to make sure water pays for water, sewer pays for project costs that benefit sewer, and it works out to be that the wastewater is about 71%, the water is about 29%. As I mentioned, the water would pay water, sewer pays sewer. I already mentioned that, you know, eliminating recycled water cuts out about $20 million, but if you lose your subsidized financing as a cost of that, you'd, it would be, it would end up being a wash at the end of the day, what the customers had to pay. Let me move on. The funding sources. So the city's been very aggressive in trying to pursue grants and loans. You have a grant specialist in hand, you've been working with the state revolving fund loan, you've applied to WIFIa. So good news on that front so far is you did receive $10.3 million planning loan from SRF at a 1.7% interest rate, which is great. If you get more SRF funding, you won't have to pay that back in 10 years, you'll be able to spread it over kind of a full 30-year, normal SRF payback. I already mentioned, you were one of 12 communities to be invited to apply for WIFIa, which is fantastic. They'll fund up to 49% of the project, which equates to about $60 million of WIFIa funding. On top of that, even though you're pursuing state revolving fund loans and other grants and other, you know, subsidized funding efforts out there, our financial plan doesn't assume that any of those are future hopefuls are going to happen at this stage. So we assumed that revenue bonds would be needed to fund about 20% of the cost. This is under the base case scenario. If we're talking the phase-in scenario, it's about 4.3 million less cash going to the project, because the rates are phasing in and not, you know, fully front-loaded, and that means you have to borrow 4.3 million more from bonds. So maybe bonds could be, you know, 25% of the project cost. And the other key thing is, I want to point out...
Alex, I have a question about the WIFIa loan. What is the percentage for that?
We're assuming a 3.25% rate. Right now, when we look at what the WIFIa loan rate would be, it'd be a little over 3%, but, you know, your final interest rate's not going to be locked in until the agreement is finalized, you know, later on. So interest rates are subject to move with market conditions, so we built in a little bit of a buffer, not a lot, but a little bit. But one thing I was going to say, one thing that was actually the rating agency, we had a call with Standard &amp; Poor's yesterday morning, and one of the things that they were impressed with also was the proactive financial planning for a project like this, because it's a big project, particularly for community or size. And, you know, going back to 2015, even though those rates didn't know what the project would ultimately cost, this community did take steps to move the rates in the right direction and, you know, greatly strengthened the finances of your water and sewer enterprises. And so you, the rates that were adopted, in addition to funding the regular sewer fund expenses, are providing some cash funding towards this project. You've already spent $5 million, as I've mentioned. But with these additional surcharges, the nice thing is, if you start phasing them, and now, the debt service for WIFIa is not going to hit until about five years down the line, because they let you complete your project first before they start charging you the debt service, which is nice, because it gives you a period where if you are charging these rates, you're generating cash that can be used for the project, rather than holding off on any rate increases and spiking the rates in year five, that would have to go to a lot higher level. So proactively, you're going to be able to contribute a substantial amount of cash to the project, which is looked very favorably upon for cost-sharing, when SRF, the state revolving fund's looking at this as well. So again, we're looking at, you know, 22, 23 million of cash funding. If you did the phase-in approach, it'd be about 4.3 million less, so, you know, something in the $18 million range. We had a number of questions, as one just here, what are you assuming for your debt assumptions? So our firm, in addition to doing rates, we're also specialized in doing water and wastewater financing. We do a lot of bonds, bank loans, we've helped a lot of agencies get state revolving fund loans and other financing programs. What we're building in is rates that are a little bit conservative compared to current interest rates, but not excessively so. You already have your SRF planning loan, 10 years at 1.7%. The WIFIa loan, we're assuming 3.25% with a 35-year payback. For revenue bonds, we're assuming a 4.7% interest rate with a 30-year payback. And all in, if you were to get, you know, all this financing as anticipated, it would work out to be that you're borrowing about $95 million, and the all-in TIC stands for true interest cost, that's a number that's looked at in the bond side, it's kind of like a weighted average maturity, factoring in all the stream of payments that you have from all these different funding sources, it works out to be a little less than 3.5%. And mind you, inflation is eating out a portion of that, so maybe this is inflation plus 1.5% to look at it that way. We're modeling this with level annual debt service, depending on how the state revolving fund loan, planning loan is going to be paid back, it's going to be paid back over 10 years. Then we've spoken with WIFIa, and the revenue bonds would be kind of structured around that, so you don't have a big lump of debt service that then goes down. Instead, it'd be level annual debt service going out the full period. That's why these surcharges don't need to change. Once they're in place, they can stay at their current levels for the next 30 to 35 years. Of course, if debt was refunded, or as, you know, debt fell away, you might be able to reduce them in later years. But there's no increase ever planned for the water reclamation facility surcharges. On top of this, the city's been evaluating its capital needs for the water and sewer enterprises. We wanted to make sure that that was included in your projections as well, that all the focus isn't only on the water reclamation facility. You've got a lot of old infrastructure out there that needs repairs and replacements, you have fire flow deficiencies, you've got sewer lines and shifting ground that have a lot of cracks over time. So the district worked with Corolo to update its capital improvement program, and what we're looking at is, you know, I'm going to say roughly $1 million per year, a little bit more than that in the near term for some of the high priority water needs, but, so that's what's built into the rates also, is generating roughly $1 million per year over the long run into the rates that have already been adopted, so you can address the needs as things go on, as time goes on. So I mentioned, we developed financial projections that were in the draft report, but there's just too many numbers to throw up on a chart there, so we do have a graph that kind of summarizes what's happening with finances over the next 10 years, just so you get a kind of a visual, a graphic sense of what's happening there. At the bottom of this chart here is blue, that's your ongoing, this is for sewer, your ongoing operating and maintenance expenses. And those are going to kick up a little bit when the new plant starts to come online, because you're going to have some additional conveyance cost per year. I think it's $275,000, I'm forgetting the exact number, but so it's going to be a little bump up of O&M, in addition to just regular cost inflation. The yellow shows the pay-as-you-go capital program, and you can see, you know, roughly $1 million a year over the next 10 years. The big differences are the green and the purple. The green on this chart represents the debt service for the water reclamation facility. Again, if you get bonds, or if you stick with your current 10-year repayment for the planning loan, those debt repayments are going to start a little sooner, but the bulk of it, the WIFIa, and if you were to get a long-term SRF loan, you're not going to have to start repaying that debt till the year after the project is complete. So that's why there's a big bump up in the green there, and that's going to go on at those levels for, you know, 30 to 35 years. The purple's the interesting one from my perspective, because that represents the amount of cash funding that you'd be able to contribute toward the project to keep the debt financing down. And you can see in the early years, the red line shows the revenues coming in. And under the base case scenario, we're assuming that that full surcharge is starting, you know, not this year, but next fiscal year. So already, it's bumping up substantially the amount of cash funding available for the project. The other thing is, you do have some fund reserves in your water and sewer funds, and what I was going to recommend is, don't spend those down until you get towards the tail end of the project, just because there's always unknowns out there. But we're assuming, kind of during the last year of construction, that if you didn't need any of those funds for any unknown contingencies, you'd be able to spend down some of your existing fund reserves towards the project, and what we were aiming is that you would maintain $4 million of reserves in both your water and sewer funds in the long run, over the longer run. So you'd spend down anything in excess of $4 million towards the project at the tail end of construction, just to give yourself a buffer in case, you know, something unknown happens. Similar for the water side, you know, same story there. The O&M increases a bit, there'd be some recycling water expenses that kick in after the project's complete. One good thing that's happening is your payments for imported water for state water project, a chunk of that is for repaying Morro Bay's share of Central Coast Water Authority bonds. Those bonds reach final maturity in October of 2021, so you only have, you know, three to four more years of payments, and when those go away, that's freeing up about $670,000 a year of financing that's then available to put towards the project or other funding needs of the water enterprise. So the water enterprise isn't expected to be contributing as much cash to this project as the sewer enterprise is, but, you know, same thing here, you've got a little bit elevated level of near-term, high priority capital needs for an old tank that needs to be replaced and some other high priority projects, but long-term, the rates are, your existing rates are kind of designed for funding a million per year. I'm not going to go, this is the phase-in scenario. Under the phase-in scenario, the only difference to note is that the rates phase in more gradually for these surcharges, so you're generating a little less cash each year, taking on a little more debt service, resulting in a little bit higher debt service payments, and the increase for about $3 more in the water facility surcharge. In terms of what's being proposed for the surcharges, this is the base case scenario. We're paralleling your existing wastewater rates. This is the wastewater surcharge, so there'd be fixed monthly charges for residential customers. The single-family charge would be $25. The multifamily charge is 80% of that, so it's $20. The non-residential customers would pay volumetric rates that are based on their wastewater strength. Most of your customers are at, you know, domestic or moderate strength, but you do have some higher strength customers, like restaurants, who would contribute more toward the project. And in the phase- And in the phase-in scenario, the same rate structure, although the rates would phase in a little bit more gradually, with the water surcharge for single-family homes going from $9 to 18 to 27, so kind of phasing in over three years, and the, the same proportionate increases on the commercial rates over that same period. On the water side, we're proposing something very similar, a fixed charge on the residential side, these are going to be fixed debt service payments going out for, for a number, you know, many years. And what's being proposed on the non-residential side is just a uniform rate for all water use. It's very hard coming up with a fixed charge on the commercial side, because you have customers that are, you know, might have the same meter, but they're all over the map in terms of amount of water that they use. So this is a pretty common, that's why a lot of agencies have sewer rate structures, you know, fixed residential, volumetric, commercial. And under the phase-in scenario, the water surcharge would phase in from 8 to 12 to 17, again, over three years, and the, the non-residential charges would go up by the exact same percentages as the, the water. This slide here shows what the total combined bill would be for single-family homes at different levels of use. On the left is a single-family bill with a customer using only one unit of water per month, and on the far right is what if you had a customer using 10 units of, per month. Now, by the time you get to 10 units, you're probably up to like 90% of all residential bills are going to be at or below that level, so maybe even higher. So there's not a lot of folks who use more, but you do have some in the community, some folks that do use a lot of water. So what's shown on this chart, there's, you know, the four different components of your water and sewer utility bill. The blue shows your monthly water charge, and obviously, someone who uses less water is going to pay less, someone who uses more water pays more, that's why that angles up. The green is the monthly sewer charge, and these are showing charges after everything's been fully phased in, and this is showing charges for, you know, for single-family residential. But the green shows the sewer charge, that's a fixed charge per month. The yellow shows the water surcharge for a single-family home, and the orange shows the sewer water reclamation facility surcharge. So we're, again, talking about the total bill for a single-family home, typical home with five units being about $191 per month. Again, you know, the average right now is about four and a half units, so you'll probably see a lot of people in the, you know, the 180 to 195 range would be a big chunk of your customers. The next slide shows it with a phase-in, as I've mentioned probably too many times now, the phase-in lower rate increases over the next few years, but they have to go a little bit higher over the long run, because you're not contributing as much cash to the project, would need a little bit more debt financing. So with a phase-in, fully phased in, the surcharge would go to a total of 194 per month for the typical single-family home. A couple of alternatives are out there for, for council input, and these, maybe I'll have Scott talk about it, these alternatives are also put out there at the community meetings, that the community can weigh in on them, and also to the joint committee meeting, so, you know, trying to figure out what's the best way of implementing these surcharges. One obviously choice is, you know, for this surcharge to be implemented, would you want to go with the, the front-loaded approach or the phase-in approach? And in terms of billing alternatives, we had originally proposed that you might want to consider having a separate charge for the water reclamation facility surcharges levied on the, the property tax rolls. The other alternatives are just separate line items on the monthly bill, but I just wanted to show you an example of what that would look like for a single-family home if it was put on the county tax rolls. We're talking the, the total surcharge, you know, for annually, under the base case scenario, equals about $492 annually, and under the phase-in, it would go up to 528. So that's the $41 times 12 months. And the way it would be collected on the property tax rolls would be a separate line item on the tax rolls, those charges, as homeowners know, you get two bills a year, one's due in, in December, the first installment, the second installment in April, and each of those installments would equate to about $250. The biggest difference between levying the charge on the monthly bill versus putting it on the tax roll, I won't go into all the differences, is in my mind, who the burden falls on, is it on the ratepayer, or is it on the property owner? Now, in this community, there's the same, there's a big overlap for both those groups. Most of the homeowners are the ratepayers here, but you certainly do have a number of renters who are tenants who are paying the bills right now, and you do have some property owners that don't live here in Marrow Bay, maybe they, they live in Arizona and they own a property here that they're renting out. So who would, you know, pay the direct bill, would it be the property owner, or the, or the lease, the tenant? And, well, maybe I'll just mention this, and I'm going to turn it back over to Scott, because we did get some input on that from the community and the various committees. So for council, I think the, maybe I'll turn this over to you right now, but that kind of concludes what we wanted to cover, but any questions, you know, fire my way at the appropriate time for the public as well, we're happy to try to answer everything we can.
Thank you, Alex, very much. So the, at the community forum on Saturday, we had a dot exercise up at the front on these two questions, and it was largely split 50/50 on both, both of those. And then we had the CFAC, PWEB, WORF CAC joint meeting on Monday of this week, and we, we asked each individual board member to, to kind of weigh in, and predominantly supportive of the monthly bill, there was more support for a phase-in versus front-loaded, but it was, it was a little more even, but definitely there was a preference for phase-in, but almost unanimous on the monthly bill versus the property tax. We also are seeking direction, or tonight, to authorize, the city manager to serve as the authorizing agent to submit the WIFIA loan application, accompanied by an application fee of $25,000. We're trying to get our application in at least a week or two ahead of the application deadline of July 17th. So we're looking to submit on July 8th and getting all of our ducks in a row, so we do need to have that authorization before we can proceed to do that. So that largely completes our presentation, but I did want to, one more time, kind of go over some of the tentative key next steps. The Blue Ribbon Commission Report, as everybody's heard, heard about, tremendous effort from four individuals in our community, did an amazing job, and we thank them for their service, both to the community and the city, to really kind of look at every detail of the analysis that you just heard, and all, look at all the kind of cost assumptions for the city, not only the WORF, but just all of our enterprise, water and sewer enterprise fund costs, looking, looking back prospectively 2015 into the future. So that, that report has been issued, we had the community forum last Saturday, we had the discussion with the three, the joint meeting on Monday, we had the discussion tonight, where we'll be seeking input from council, not necessarily to move forward with the rate, but to get more direction or clarification, and then tentatively come back on July 10th to initiate the 218 process. If that was the case, if that occurred on that evening, most likely August 28th would be the Prop 218 hearing. So that is the high level, there's a lot of other stuff that will be occurring in that time period, including the EIR for the project as well. With that, we will conclude and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll start with questions from council, and then as soon as we're concluded there, I've got speaker slips for public comment, and if there's anybody else for public comment, if you could grab a speaker slip over there and just bring it over, we'll, we'll go through that. And as I ask council real quickly for questions, just if you, one more thing of clarity for next step, Scott, you were talking about August 28th is the hearing, so, and then July 10th, you know, release, release the notice, so can you just clarify that, because we say, hey, we're releasing the notice, but then there's a hearing on the 28th, and what does the hearing actually mean? If you could just describe those two processes, so we know what the hearing is, and that, that's the conclusion of the 218? If you could just describe that a little bit more detail, please.
Sure, I'll let the attorney correct me, because I'm sure I'll get it wrong, but the July 10th would be if, get direction tonight, clarification, if council is comfortable with proceeding forward and initiating the 218 process on July 10th, that would authorize us to do so. The 45-day period of time to allow for the protest of a, of a rate increase per Prop 218 would initiate when the notifications are sent out to ratepayers. And ultimately, it's a parcel, parcel owners are the, the requirement for the Prop 218, but in, in Marrow Bay, we go the extra step, and not only send it to all the parcel owners, but also to the ratepayers. In some, some instances, that's one in the same, the ratepayer also is the parcel owner, but in many cases, that's not the case, and we have renters who are the ratepayers. So we would send out a notification potentially the very next day, but we would have 45 days from that period for members of the public who are ratepayers to submit a protest. There's been discussion about the various ways you can do that, we can go into those if you'd like to, through the Q&amp;A segment. The last date by which somebody could submit a written protest would be the public hearing date of August 28th, that would be the conclusion of the 45-day period.
Okay, and as far as the council direction for today, question is, front-loaded versus phase-in, property tax versus the monthly bill, and then authorize city manager for the WIFIA loan application. Coming back on July 10th, so ideally, it would be great to have that direction on these three tonight versus coming back on July 10th and having somewhat of an option, right, and then actually deciding on July 10th. Does that make sense, my question there?
It does. Of course, we could be prepared to move forward to the 10th with options, certainly makes it easier to hone in if there's a consensus amongst council members on both of those issues. And of course, there could be clarification that's required, or maybe a look at some of the analysis or different components, it's, it's up to council's discretion on that.
So, so even if on July 10th, if we, even today, we gave direction as far as these particular decisions, and I'll just talk without the, the billing and then the phase-in, we could, we could probably come, if we come to a conclusion today, we could still ask for an option be delivered to us as well on July 10th, you know, just in preparation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, Red, you want to start us off on questions, and then we'll...
Sure, but I have no questions.
Okay, Matt, any questions?
Yes, I do have a few questions about some of the slides, and Alex, I guess they're going to come to you. Looking at slide number eight in terms, and you don't necessarily have to go back there, I bet you can just answer this, is knowing that SRF is, could be down the road, what is the timeline for applying for SRF monies?
Yeah, okay, you guys have been working with SRF on this, but I'll defer to Eric on this one.
Hello? Oh, wow, sorry. So the SRF application process, in order to complete that process or complete that application, there's two important pieces that we need. One is the financial package, which essentially can be done after the rate process is completed, and we can show that the rates will, will repay the SRF loan, so that's the one important piece. The other important piece is the technical application portion, which is essentially completed, we have all the information we need to do that, and then the third one is the environmental piece. And so, the EIR, final EIR, needs to be certified, so again, that's something that's coming here in the next week or so, so.
Okay, so saying that, Eric, then, as we're going through these, this rate, new rate possibilities, and knowing that the EIR is going to be re, re, gone over in the, in this, in the near term, so that means two of those three are going on same, right now as we speak, so that means in terms of that timeline, if we go ahead, as this project moves ahead, we could be doing, pursuing SRFs very soon.
Absolutely, so, yeah, we're currently doing, we're currently doing that, but we wouldn't be able to kind of finalize everything until, I believe, the tentative date for coming to council with the final EIR is August 14th, and then if the rate hearing were to occur on August 28th, then it would be, that would essentially, we would have everything we would need to go forth with a, with a full-blown application, yeah.
All right, so that's, that was the answer I was looking for. My next question is, looking at the rates as, looking at both the base case and the phased-in, and Alex, I think this is to you.
Sure.
Knowing what our rates are right now, after our last 218 in 2014, what is the best way, do you think, because looking at these base case scenario rates, if a person's looking at it, these rates are what would come in as this project is, starts in 2019? And that's when the, if we have to get this passed, that's when that $41 would be started to, when would this, I guess, I guess my time is, what is the date when these would become?
Yeah, what we assumed, kind of two things, let me go, where's the, under the base case scenario, we assumed, you know, no charge this coming, upcoming fiscal year. You have, you know, you do have, like, there's a couple of gradual water and sewer rate increases, they're kicking in each of the next two years, I think it's, you know, 7% to 8% per year over the next two years, but we assumed that the charge would kick in starting July 1, 2019, so in effect for your 2019-20 fiscal year. Under the base case scenario, the whole $41, you know, 25 sewer, 16 water, kicks in all starting that year, it's a flat charge with both of them, and they would stay at that level forever. Under the phase-in approach, it's a little bit more gradual, where the sewer, or the water would phase in, the sewer would phase in from 9 to 18 to 27, and the water phases in from, you know, 8 to 12 to 17, so, you know, they, it phases in over three years pretty much.
So with that, so July 1st, 2019, knowing that our last 218 was in 2014, we have one more rate increase coming in this next fiscal year, and then, so that means we'd have this one with our last 218 that our residents can expect, and then when these would become effective July 1st, 2019, or am I misreading that?
Yeah, it's close, let me, you have actually, you're about to go into the fourth year out of the fifth year, so this next year, I think I had a slide up here in the beginning that, yeah, I'll, I'll show you the base case scenario, let me show you the phase-in scenario. So at the top, it shows your, you know, water and sewer bills, the water bill's based on five units for a single-family home. You have, right now, we're not quite in 2018-19, but we're, I mean, just a few days, we're going to be there, so you have one rate increase that kicks in, then you have a second one that kicks in in 2019-20, that's when, it's that very last year that the rate increases kick in, that the surcharges would start, so they, they overlap it by one year.
Okay, got it, that's what I wanted to do, but also, I wanted to give the folks a source of information, so they can look at what is current and then what is going to be coming, and that's just what I needed. Also, my, this is my third question, is the $5 million, and I think, Alex, you talked about what we've already banked with our last rate increase for this project, and we're, $5 million, what's been spent? And Rob, this question maybe is for you, in terms of the history of outlay of money for different parts of the project, what is the best source that people can do to find out how this $5 million has been spent?
I would direct people to the quarterly budget updates, I think, and the one we did for the third quarter had the breakout of the, the $5 million, and that's on our website, under the monthly reporting tab on the left-hand side of the page, you can click on that and find the third quarter report.
Okay, thank you, and then, that's all my questions, thank you.
Okay, Matt, thanks. John?
Thank you. Testing, yeah, thank you, thank you, Alex, for the presentation, thank you, staff, for the, the comments, opening comments, et cetera. I have a number of questions, just doing a deep dive in some of the issues, so I'm, I'm referring to the staff report, and I'll, I'll use the pagination that you've used to refer to the issue where I have a question. First of all, on page number five of 173, the O&M costs for 2022, and I know this is not a huge part, maybe of the overall capital cost, but these are ongoing costs. I would assume there would be significant efficiencies or economies of scale with the new plant, and talking to staff, maybe mainly here, yet in the 2022 projection, it appeared that the subcommittee, or the Blue Ribbon Committee, was only assuming a 12.5, was assuming a 12.5% increase over four years. What was the discussion around potential for economies of scale? I noted the issue about two positions may, maybe being cut, but, but with a new efficient plant that isn't 60 years old, wouldn't we expect to see significant O&M decreased costs? Just... Just...
Yeah, I think I can, I can answer that. We spend a lot of time putting together these future O&M projections. One of the things that we did use is we asked the individuals that were proposing on, on the onsite improvements for the design-build portion of the project, we asked them to provide numbers for things like chemicals, for maintenance hours, replacement, equipment replacements, and some other items. And so we took that information into account between those two proposals that we received. And then Mr. Millen and I sat down and went through current staffing levels, and then anticipated future staffing levels. So while there are going to be some efficiencies with a new plant, the city will now have likely one or two fairly large pump stations that it doesn't have now. So there's additional facilities that are being added in, there's the cost of, well, not huge, there's a cost for moving that wastewater from the existing site to the new site. And then in just terms of the level of treatment, there's a higher cost in the treatment itself, the number of chemical, the chemicals that are used, and some other things. The electrical usage of the new plant is higher than the old plant because, just because of the level of treatment. So while I believe there's some efficiencies in staff, there's some other additional O&M costs that are accounted for in those numbers.
Okay, so those were vetted fairly significantly.
Those, yeah, those were vetted, you know, based on current O&M budgets, and then really, we broke it down to the level of individual, individual line items, all the way down to chemicals and all those different things.
Great, thank you. Page six of the staff report, I just noted the sources of funding, and to me, you know, when I think about buying a new car, being able to put down 14% in cash is fairly significant because it decreases significantly the finance costs that I might incur as I finance the automobile. I noted that we have 18% in cash that we're going to be able to access. And it looks like, from my understanding of what I've read, there's a significant amount of that, it has been accumulated from the last rate increase that will translate over. And, and so my question really is, and if I'm incorrect in any of those statements, tell me, doesn't that 18% cash-down payment or cash availability significantly decrease debt load costs or debt service costs? And have you estimated what that savings might be based upon the good work of this council and staff?
It certainly does. And you have accumulated some cash toward the project with the rates that have already been adopted, but, you know, it's really the surcharges that kick in are really going to drive a lot more cash funding toward the project over the next few years, while the project's rolling out before you have to pay debt service, starting approximately five years down the line. And certainly, the cash that you put towards the project reduces, you know, the amounts you need to borrow. And it's, and the way you're going to do the borrowing, you're going to go after the lowest-cost financing first. So the more cash you put in, that reduces the highest-cost financing that you have at the end of the day. Right now, we're assuming that's bonds. So that is certainly a benefit to keep the rate lower in the long term. Now, a lot of these rates, you know, when I look at this stuff financially, it's, a lot of these things work out to be an hour-later game. Yeah, you could not charge a surcharge and have it spike up in year five or year four, but then you're giving the rate payers a little break for a few years now, but then you have a lot higher rates for the next 30 years out there. So we thought it was a kind of a proactive approach, that you put money towards the project while you can, so you can keep that rate as low as possible over the long term. In terms of the dollar amounts, well, when we did our phased-in approach, it was about 4.3 million of cash funding, added about $3 to the surcharge. So, you know, what does 20 million save you at the end of the day? Five times three, 18, you know, about 18 bucks per month.
Significant.
For 30 years and more, yeah.
Great.
It is.
Did, I asked this some time ago when you were here, and it's, it's an old question, but I'm going to ask it again. Did, did we do an opportunity cost lost calculation on the fact that water rates were not increased for how many years?
20.
For 20 years? Did we calculate the opportunity cost lost over that period of time that could have gone to capital contributions for improvements? Is there a number?
I don't think we have yet, but we can go back and look and say, hey, what if you had raised rates, even at 3% a year for 20 years? Because that'd be, you know, a tremendous funding stream. You'd think rates would be 60% higher. You wouldn't have needed to do rate increases last time, probably. But the other side of the coin is people have been paying a lot more for those prior 20 years, but we could certainly come up with a cost estimate, but 20 years is a long time for no rate increases. But one of the reasons why, it's not all that, hey, you should have raised rates and you didn't, because the city was doing, you know, kind of small gradual sewer rate increases most year to try to keep the rates in line with the cost. But one of the things that Rob reminded me of at one of our prior sessions was, you had taken on a loan for your decal facility, I think, back in 1992, and, you know, 20 years or so later, that debt service went away because it was paid off. So you did, there was kind of a free-up of some cash funding that enabled you to avoid some rate increases, but still, that's, that's a long time to go without any rate increases. And certainly, even inflationary increases, you would have had millions and millions of dollars more over the last 20 years.
Appreciate that, yeah, just, just an observation I think is important because of some of the costs that we're seeing now. Page number nine, the question I have is, if we made the decision to take this fixed cost and allocate it via the tax rolls, is there a cash flow issue that might occur? And is there a cost, a debt service cost to that cash flow? In other words, we're only getting a payment twice a year as opposed to monthly? Are there cash flow losses that would require debt service?
Not necessarily, because your debt service payments are also going to hit once or twice a year, depending on what type of debt is, you know, issued. So it can be timed so that the debt service hits after your cash funding comes in. So I don't think, at the end of the day, that that would have any impact on, you know, raising or lowering the cost of what, where the rate needed to go. It'll work both ways, but you just have to be, you know, careful when you're doing the debt structuring, that it's not, whoops, we have to make a big payment, but we don't get our taxes till next month. So you'll also have some fund reserves to cover that buffer, but, yeah, I don't, I don't see any impact on the finances. You're kind of getting, those two payments are also kind of, you know, in the middle of the year. So, you know, one's in December, one's in April, so it's, it's not as aggressive as if you're getting the monthly payments, you'll be a little more ahead of the game with that, but it's really no impact in my mind, minimal.
Do we have an idea of the percentage of out-of-town owners of homes that are on the tax rolls?
I think we might have a clarification.
Oh, clarification, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to point out that if we do put it on the property tax rolls, there is a $2 per parcel per year fee that the county will charge. So just wanted to make sure that was clear. And then to kind of circle back a little bit on Alex's point about the decal debt, the difference between the rates that were, when we retired that debt, the city didn't lower rates, they didn't take that into account as a surcharge. The difference with what is being proposed here is the surcharge sunsets. So when the debt is paid off, that $41 or $44 or whatever, depending on what plan you go with, will sunset and go away. So I just wanted to point out that difference between, that's kind of why the rates didn't have to increase for 20 years.
Good clarification, thank you, Jen, appreciate that. Do we know the percentage of renters, excuse me, out-of-town owners for homes in the community that do not maybe significantly use water on a monthly basis that might be leveraged from tax roll payments? Just curious what the percentage is.
I think we can get that information. We don't have it right now. We can see how many zero reads that we have in any given month. I know that we do have approximately 1,200 parcels in the city that their mailing address is not in the city of Morro Bay.
So if we had 6,000 rate payers, that would roughly be, you know, what, 15, 18%?
Somewhere around there, but I'm not going to do math in public anymore. City manager won't let me.
It's a good thing. So, well, I consider that significant, but I'll save that for comment. Alex, did I hear correctly that if we do the phased-in rate increase versus the non-phased-in rate increase, that we are going to incur about $4.3 million increased debt service liability?
That's right, because when you have the, we'll call it the front-loading, even though, again, there's no charge the first year, you're generating more cash each year instead of phasing it in. So you generate about 4.3 million more cash, meaning, under the phased-in, you'd have to, you wouldn't get that 4.3 million, you'd have to take on 4.3 million more debt.
Okay, so it would be significant in terms of savings. I wanted to ask, this is in the, I guess, well, I'm going on with page, the Blue Ribbon Report, and, and I was, I was going to just explore the WIFIA loan because I have some questions about it. The, the assumption is 3.25% on the WIFIA loan, but from what I understand, the, the actual interest rate is based upon the slag rate when you, you actually enact the loan. And it's very similar to the 30-year treasury rate, plus like a basis point or so. Last year, it was 2.76%. This year, it's 2.96%, averaged over 30-year. Is 3.25, given the fact that the Fed is increasing rates, conservative or not, in your opinion? And I'm just a little concerned and nervous about that.
Yeah, that's, that's a real good question. That's something we kind of weighed, I mean, how conservative do we want to be with our debt service, you know, interest rate assumptions and things like that? It's a little bit conservative compared to where we're looking at now, you know, I think the rates are just about 3%. So it's, it's higher, but it's not a ton higher. So it gives you some buffer, but if interest rates go shooting through the roof before all this is said and done, you're right, then we have to go back and look. At the other side of the coin is, there is hope that you will be able to get state revolving fund loan. Actually, in addition to the city working with them, while, I actually just called the project managers to check on a few things as well. And normally, when I call the SRF folks, they're pretty discouraging. They're saying, well, we're not, we can't guarantee anyone any funds, and you've got a regular wastewater project, I don't know if that's going to tick off our, might not meet our high priority. But, you know, talking with them regarding your project, they're obviously already very familiar with the project, they've already awarded you $10 million-plus planning loan, they know you're working with WIFIA, which is very positive in their mind that you were one of the agencies selected for that. You have the recycled component, which is one of their high priorities currently, so it was, even though he wouldn't guarantee anything, it was one of the more positive feedbacks I've gotten from the state revolving fund loan in a long time. So, you know, we're assuming bond funding for the, a chunk of the project, but, you know, fingers are crossed that you will be able to get state revolving fund loan. But there is, there's a balance there, because we didn't want to use overly conservative assumptions and, as well, and then have the rate be higher, and then all of a sudden, you know, maybe it's less politically palatable. So it's kind of a balance there. 3.25 might be a little less than what I would normally use for long-term planning, but this WIFIA, I mean, it's, the application's coming due real soon, so I don't know how much the long-term rates are going to go. What the Fed controls is the short-term rates, and you're right, they're raising those short-term rates, but the long-term rates, at least for the six months this year, have been relatively stable so far.
And that, that kicks in at what time, the WIFIA loan?
Yeah, it's all locked in at once, yep.
Pardon me? It kicks in at what time? What, what time is the rate set? When we, when the application is submitted, when we begin construction, or is there, are we going to do the five-year deferral?
Oh, yeah, it's when the agreement is finalized.
When the agreement is finalized.
So this is going to happen before you, you know, get any financing and can, you know, start spending money on the project, you'll know what that rate is. And I forget the timing, at some time in the next, how many months, a year, eight months to a year?
Probably six months to a year. WIFIA will not sign a loan agreement until we can show a fully funded project. So we have to have either ready to issue, potentially issue bonds, or a complete SRF application.
The, you noted that the average residential user rate will go up 27% approximately?
I'm forgetting the percentage, but sure, that sounds about right, yeah.
From the report, did you do a calculation on the average commercial increase for the business owners in terms of the percent increase?
Yeah, the commercial rates are going up kind of proportionately. The sewer rates, it was just, you know, it's kind of a mirror of your sewer rates. On the water rates, there'd be a kind of a uniform rate instead of, right now, everyone pays according to tier rates, but it's pretty proportionate. We did, you know, there's some additional tables that are not in my report. We have a massive pile of tables, I mean, many pages with all these different scenarios, and we went over them with the Blue Ribbon Commission also, and I, I'm in the process of going to be selecting some and putting them as an appendix to this, but that does show, we reran scenarios for various types of commercial, a small office, you know, a small restaurant, a large restaurant, a motel. We ran a whole, a bunch of scenarios there for what the increases would look like. And obviously, if, if you're a large customer, you know, it might be a similar percentage increase, but it's going to be a bigger dollar increase. If you're a smaller customer, it's, you know, less of a dollar increase, but, you know, somewhere in the same range of percentage for, for all the customers.
Okay, and do we not have the opportunity for anybody to come in and get assistance and understanding what their rate might become individually? I think, Scott, you talked about that.
Yeah, we're...
Just because of the concern.
Yeah, we're going to put, once, once we know where we're, we're at moving forward, we, we'll put stuff on the website so that it'd be easy to track kind of your usage and, and reference that and understand what your bill will be, whether you're a resident or a business owner. And we, we do want to create office hours as well, because sometimes people have unique circumstances. So we want to be able to do that, both at City Hall and maybe out in the community as well. Some people don't want to come to City Hall to do that, so we're going to do our best to do outreach to, to those who would be impacted, and also additional outreach to the Quintana Business District based on the pipeline route that's being discussed.
My last question is, did I hear correctly, and I think it's an important question, is it true that the capital costs associated with the building of the reclamation portion of what we're taking on as a project would be totally paid for if we accessed WIFIA low-interest loan with the assumptions that the Blue Ribbon Committee has made, and the other portion of bond financing versus full bond financing? In other words, if, if we didn't have WIFIA and/or the $10 million SRF loan, we would not be able to fully capitalize the reclamation piece?
Yeah, what it comes down to is, I mean, you've already got the $10 million in hand, no matter, I think, what happens going forward, they've already awarded that to you, but in the future, yeah, it's, having that recycling component added to your facility makes it a lot more likely that you will, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons why, you know, you're in line to get WIFIA funding now. And that's one of SRF's high priorities as well for how they're going to award, so it makes you a lot more competitive. It'd be very difficult, I think, for you to get any more SRF funding, and who knows what would happen with WIFIA if you were to change the project and pull the recycling out? So we did do the analysis, assuming if you did recycled with bonds versus the whole project with WIFIA and partial bonds, and it came out to be almost a wash. Again, it really worked out that, I think it was like $1.50 savings with the recycled water facility. So without, without recycled water facilities, maybe it'd be, you know, a couple bucks less per month. But then again, if you also factor in the available, potential availability of state revolving fund loans, it's pretty much a wash at the end of the day, pretty much an exact wash.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John Marles.
Thank you, and, and I, I want to say thank you to everybody who's participated thus far in getting the project to this point. And by that, I mean, you know, our citizen advisory committees, the Blue Ribbon Commission, the staff. It's taken a long time to get here, and I really appreciate, I appreciate all of the people who have come out to all of the various meetings, the public forums, the workshops. It's really taken a long time to get here, so thank you, everyone. I just have a few questions. Actually, many of them were, my questions were answered. I know that Betty Winholz also submitted questions, but I didn't have time to add hers because I already had, I think, about 12 of my own, so I'm going to plunge in. Sorry, folks. I, this, the first couple of questions, you may just answer no if you don't know, but they would help me to... answer no, if you don't know, but they would help me to determine which of the options to choose. And the first is, if we have any data or information about the extent to which low-income Morro Bay residents are renters versus homeowners. And I assume we have both, but do we know, do they tend to more be renters, or do they tend to more be homeowners, the low-income folks? And maybe you don't know, that's okay.
This is based on our housing element data, and about 71%, of low-income, low and moderate income are renters versus homeowners.
Okay, and do we know how many of the low-income residents living in trailer parks pay their own utility bills, as opposed to having it included in their monthly fee?
I'd say roughly zero. I don't know any of our mobile home parks that have individual meters that are owned and billed by the city. They may have water meters, but they are sub-meters to the city meter. Ours have master meters, and their bill is under the commercial rate as a volumetric charge.
So the owners are billed at the commercial rate?
They're billed for the amount of water that goes through, through that meter, and their wastewater charge is not per unit, but it's for the volumetric charge.
So they would then be, in the fees that they're collecting from the people who live there, they would be collecting for any rate increase presumably that we would impose on them?
I believe they can do that, but they have to be individually metered to do that. There's some, there's, under regulations of California HUD, Housing and Urban Development regulates how, what charges the mobile home park owner can pass on to their customers, and there's certain requirements for that. I believe that the units have to be individually sub-metered to pass those rates on.
Okay, all right. And, and just for the, and I believe this has already been answered, but I'll ask it again, just to clarify, could you explain the difference between a rate increase and a surcharge?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, the customer's paying the bill, whether it's one or the other, but we're just trying to differentiate that you already have, you know, these five years of rate increases that you're almost done with, that this would be just a separate, you know, surcharge that's on the bill. It is a charge, it's a different type of charge, we're just trying to differentiate and say, hey, here's an additional amount that would be on the bill for helping fund the water reclamation facility, and those surcharges would, you know, when the debt service is paid off, or as it's paid down, they would reduce and eventually go away.
So they would go away, but if it was just on there as a rate increase, it could continue on past the?
It could, like what happened with your, your water rates. I mean, your debt service went away, but, you know, the rates continued on and helped you offset.
So this is a way to really protect, to make sure that we are only funding the new WRF with the water rate, with the surcharge?
Yeah, there is a little bit towards the project that's, that's coming from the sewer rates, because the sewer rates were kind of anticipating some more funding, but we didn't wanna start tinkering with, you know, rates, surcharges. So the surcharge is really, it's like just a separate surcharge that would be on the bill, but it's, you know, the same people paying what would be the same amounts under, under different cases.
Okay, and?
Excuse me, just, I think that's the advantage of having the rate review on an annual basis with the budget. We can compare revenues versus actual costs and determine whether that next scheduled rate increase is actually needed or not. So we can appropriately size those rate increases to up to the maximum authorized.
Right, thank you, thank you, Rob. And in the report, the stated city goal, and it's cited on page 20 of 73, it said that our city's goal is to achieve local supply independence through the complete recycling of wastewater. And that just, boy, did that stand out to me. Where did that goal come from? I, I have no recollection that the council ever approved a goal like that. I remember suggesting that we wanted to diversify our water supply, but that implies multiple sources, not that we were ever expecting this project to fully have a supply us with water. So if somebody could respond to that?
Sure, that's a, this is the Blue Ribbon Commission's report, so they, you know, water independence was, you know, their understanding of the goal. I mean, I know it's more nuanced than that, so that, that's where that came from. Ultimately, the goal that we're working on this year, 2018, for the City Council's goals and objectives, is the One Water and the WRF project. The intentionality there with the recycle component is to create, to augment our water sources and water supply, diversify our water portfolio, to assist us in moving towards water independence, but it certainly wouldn't do that alone. But it's, it's, it's the movement towards.
And if we remember the presentation from the other night, really not one water source can fully supply Morro Bay's water when we're looking at build-out conditions.
Right, and that's what I remember you're saying many, many times to us, that, that really should never be a goal, that we would completely rely on one water source, so.
Yeah, we don't need that one-legged stool.
So thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for people who may have read the report. Regarding the feasibility of injecting treated water into the Morro Valley wells, do we know for sure that it's feasible? That's my first question.
Talked a little bit about this at the workshop this past Saturday, but there's really two things that we wanna be mindful of when we're looking at the potable reuse in terms of the regulations and requirements. One thing is that the correct treatment processes are put together to meet Division of Drinking Waters regulations and comfort level, and, and we can check that box in terms of what's been proposed in the RFP, the design-build RFP, and what we're expecting to build there at South Bay for the onsite facilities. The second piece has to do with the minimum travel time in the groundwater, so DDW requires two months. The previous GSI work that was done last year had indicated that over, for a number of different scenarios and a number of different injection locations, that two-month minimum was achievable, and so taking those two things into account, yes, it's feasible.
Well, and one of the things that the Blue Ribbon Commission came up with was, really, they, they thought that we should delay the rate increase by a month, because I assume, they assumed that more information would become available, partly from this GSI additional study. So could you, and that may in fact be part of the negotiations with Philank and Black and Beach, as to how much water we need to treat. So could you just clarify what that next study is going to cover, and also how long it will take before we'll get answers to it?
Yeah, so that additional study work is really, there's, there's a couple of options that are still out there in regards to the off-site recycle water facilities, and that's whether the injection location would be on either the east or the west side of the highway. There's a number of things to consider there, but that's one of the key things that that report will answer, is what is the better injection location? The second piece is, how much water ultimately can we inject and extract at either one of those locations? And so, without getting into the issue of inducing some kind of water quality issues. So the number that's been used, coming out of the master reclamation plan, the number that's been used in various places is 825 acre feet, is essentially what the, kind of the safe number for the extraction, but that's the number that we'll be figuring out. One, where are we putting that water into the ground, and number two, how much are we putting in and extracting? That would go into potentially the sizing of those advanced treatment facilities. It's not gonna have a huge impact on cost, and from a timing perspective, we're not gonna necessarily have the answers, all the answers back from that before we enter into a contract with, with the Philank-Black and Beach team. There are provisions that we can put into that ultimate contract that would allow us some flexibility even after we sign a contract with them. If we get three or four, or five, six months down the road, and we get the GSI report back, and it shows that we may wanna reduce the size of the advanced treatment or injection facilities, we will have, we would have the ability to do that, and would have some type of predetermined, you know, amount of money that we would be able to save if we were to do that. I think that's gonna be our goal, is to identify some different steps with that team over the next couple of months, and so that when we sign the contract, we already have that identified, and we can pull the trigger on that when we get the information back from GSI.
And I guess what I'm getting at is that, would we learn anything more significantly in the next month to warrant delaying?
No, GSI isn't under contract at this point in time. The city went through a selection process and identified them as being the, kind of the preferred, the preferred firm to do that work, but there's no contract with them. Contract hasn't been brought to council. It's gonna take several months to do that, and then it's gonna take a couple of months. We're gonna prioritize some of the work that they would be working on to get that answer as soon as possible, but we're not gonna have any better information over the next month.
Okay, so if the state water contract runs through 2038, so another 15, 16 years beyond when the WRF is operational, do you believe that the Morro Basin could accept all of the treated water over that time period? Recognizing that every year, we would draw out some when the state water project is down, but can it accept that amount, that amount that we would be producing over that period of time?
I think we're gonna have a number of different scenarios that we're gonna be working through with GSI, and those scenarios will include kind of continual injection and extraction. It will include what happens if we wanna just be injecting for a certain period of time. There may be a benefit in just injecting into the aquifer for a certain period of time, to be able to kind of flush the nitrates from the aquifer. So we're gonna be looking at a number of different scenarios, but we wanna make sure that we're not treating too much water, purifying too much water and putting it in the basin, not because it would create any issues really, it would just be kind of a waste of, waste of additional treatment cost, because that water's just gonna flow underground to the ocean eventually.
So if I understand you correctly, part of what we're doing in this, in, both in the future study that we're doing, and also in the negotiations with Philank-Black and Beach, is to really write size for the immediate future as well as the long-term?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I believe you asked my question about the commercial rates, but I just wanted to clarify that when the rate notice goes out to the businesses, they will in fact have the actual data about their own personal rate increase?
That is exactly right. The notices are gonna go out to everybody, residential and commercial, probably be the same notices, you've done it in the past, and most agencies do it. And that's gonna have to detail every exact rate that is being proposed for council consideration at the public hearing. So everyone's gonna see what the, what all the specific rates are, whether it's the phase-in or the, the surcharge, and, and also, the city's gonna be on hand to help people evaluate what the impacts are on their bills as well.
Right, very good. And my other questions have been answered, so I'm gonna ask this last one. And this was asked at the joint WRF-CAC, CFAC, PWA meeting, and I don't know if, is Jen still here? Because this is, okay, well, this one's for her, so maybe I should.
Do you want me to come back? You want me to ask questions, and we'll come back when she gets back?
Yeah, because this really is a question for her. It's, yeah, thank you.
I'll ask a few questions, and then when she goes back, we'll, we'll get, we'll get her signed up. Thanks. Marles, thank you, and thanks again for extending all this, all the gratitude, as you did. Marles, to everyone that's been participating, I think it's on behalf of all council that's done that, so thanks. The Blue Ribbon Report is just, was just amazing, so it was great to have Scott and staff work with them, so it was very advantageous. Thanks. Alex, the base rate, just wanna cover that. So, and, and one of the previous slides, I just wanna clarify that the $1 million per year on CIP was included or not included in the base rate, the surcharge base rate?
Yeah, that's, that's already in the, the water and sewer rates that were adopted, as, as they're phasing in. Yeah, we just wanted to make sure when we put all the numbers together with your water and sewer utilities, and on top of that, all the, you know, the debt repayment with the water reclamation facility project, that everything would work. And the answer is yes, it does. You, right now, the, the prior rates were designed to generate about a million per year, but, you know, things change over time, so we kind of updated our, our numbers, and we wanted to make sure that that was built in. It's actually a little bit more, I think, on the water side, there were some like critical projects that need to get done within the next, you know, few years, so it's a little bit higher, I think, water capital funding for a few years, but long-term, roughly a million dollars per year is built in.
Okay, and this, this question might be for Rob or Eric. The GSI report that Marles was just alluding to, is there a schedule or timeline that that might come back to council to approve that contract, to get that going, and do you have any recommendations on, you know, the timeline for that?
That would probably come back to council early September, something like that, after the, we get through the environmental and the rates and those kinds of things. I think we've been busy focusing on those efforts, so it would come back shortly after that.
Okay.
Just a point to clarify, as Joe's reminded us a couple of times, that we really can't execute that contract until we've completed the environmental work and have rates in place.
Okay, all right, great. And I think the next question might be for Jen, and then I was gonna turn it over to Marles, perfect timing.
Thank you. Yeah, my last question was already asked at the WRF-CAC, CFAC, PWA meeting, which I did watch on TV, and so I just wondered if you might have had some time to think about the response. But would it be feasible or possible for us to give the residential users the choice of putting, putting the surcharge on their bills or on the property tax rolls?
Sorry for stepping out for a minute, but I think, you know, we talked about it a little bit, and from an administrative perspective, I think it's just gonna be too much of a challenge to, to administer that. So the preference is to go one way or the other.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I know it was asked, and it was an interesting concept, which would allow the citizens to make the decision, but I could see that there would be a lot of administrative costs associated with that, even if it were possible. I don't even know if it's possible.
Just from a, you know, now you've got two different cash flows to manage, you've got two, administratively, we didn't even get past if it actually could happen, because I couldn't get past the administrative piece of it, so.
All right, thank you.
Also, I just, could I just add one thing about that? I think it would be, if you gave it an option, who's the one who gets to pick? Because if it's, if it's a property where there's a property owner that lives afar, and the renter lives there, the renter will say, "Well, the property owner should pay it." The property owner will say, "No, the renter should pay it." So, you know, who would make the decision, even if that was administratively feasible?
I could see it would get very complicated. I just wanted to verify that.
It would also make it difficult for us to determine how many votes are necessary to be 50-plus-one protest. I'm not even sure I could wrap my head around how to figure that out.
All right, good job on the microphone, Jen. Okay, all right, with that, unless there's any other questions from council, we'll open it for public comment, and I've got a number of speaker slips, and so I'll just go through that. And Lori, you have the timer and everything? Everything's good? Okay. First one up, Carol Trewsdale, welcome, come on up, and then Nancy Bast.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm Carol Trewsdale. I've been here since 1995, and a property and homeowner. I wanna thank the staff. I feel like I'm back in college, going after my master's thesis or something, with all these slides and numbers.
Carol, I'm sorry, is there a mic, can you turn that microphone up a little bit?
Hello?
I know you're a good speaker as well, but it's, it's, it seems a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
Is it?
Okay, thank you. Do I get my whole minutes back? The hook, okay.
Great, thanks, thanks, Carol.
Excuse me, sir? Okay, I'm Carol Trewsdale, since 1995 here, and a homeowner. The biggest thing that concerns me is I've gone to all the financial meetings. I wanna say thank you to everybody, what you've done with all these reports. And our city has steep financial issues moving forward, huge, and now we're thinking about taking on another huge debt? It scares me. It scares me when I look at demographics of 1,200 parcels of out-of-town people. That's approximately 21.4% of our residences. People can't find housing here. So I really feel that this is gonna impact our businesses. We want TOT, we want this, we want that, and, you know, I'm on fixed income. A lot of people are on fixed income, and is this a legacy that you wanna leave when you leave this board, that you put this city into financial disarray? That concerns me. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Thanks, Carol. Nancy Bast.
Hi, good evening. Nancy Bast, Morro Bay homeowner. The proposed WRF project started life costing $167 million and is currently down to $123 million. It's clear the Blue Ribbon Committee and the staff have been busting their buns to reduce the cost, and I'm very appreciative to their work. Also clear is that motivation to reduce the cost is because of the efforts of the residents, grassroots group Citizens for Affordable Living, known as CAL. Whether you're for or against the proposed project, can afford it or not, nobody likes to be scammed, and CAL has saved rate payers $44 million so far. Having said that, the $123 million estimated cost is still twice what it should cost for our mere 5,500 account payers. Having considered 17 sites, the consultants claim they found a site that will impact no neighborhood or neighbors. However, within 360 feet live almost 200 of the most fragile and vulnerable residents of our community and the over 200 workers that care for them. The senior retirement/assisted living/hospital residents will endure, according to the draft EIR, two and a half years of construction noise, air pollution, disruption, nearly 7,000 heavy truck trips, and earth-moving equipment working five days a week, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. For the approximately 3,000 it costs them monthly, these residents have a right to expect peace and quiet in their homes. There is a logical cheaper and better site for our needed water reclamation facility that would not severely disrupt the economy and quality of life for residents, businesses, and visitors. The Blue Ribbon Committee spent many hours studying data to compare down costs, to pare down costs. They reported that the cheapest source of water is state water, and that, quote, "until 2038, it is likely the most economical way to deal with water recycled by the WRF" will be to inject it into the ground and leave it there, unquote. I guess it's my time. Thank you.
Interrupted a little bit by feedback, Nancy, if you just want to complete your comments.
Okay. The WRF advanced treatment water that would be best left in the ground carries an estimated price tag of at least $20 million. These are just two aspects of the currently proposed WRF are enough to create doubt in the management, the cost, the siting, the timing, the design, and the reason it is being crammed down our throats. This is not the project that we need. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Next up, Cynthia Hawley. And then David Petonte.
I'm Cynthia Hawley, and the first thing I want to bring to your attention is that your agenda does not agendize that you're taking any action on front-loaded versus phase-in and property tax versus monthly bill. And we've been through this already. It says council direction. Those are really decisions, and you all know that the only direction you can give council tonight, other than what's agendized, is asking them for more information. So you folks can't legally take any other action tonight or give direction to do anything besides the WIFI alone. And then, knowing that you have to have an exact calculation based on actual numbers, you have to know the actual cost, and you have to know the actual amounts for the rate increases, you are proceeding tonight to violate Proposition 218. And I find that really astounding, because you seem to be in a big hurry to get all this done. And if you, if this is challenged in court, you really won't have anybody to blame but yourselves, because you are proceeding illegally. We've heard tonight that they're, that, well, we all know their funding assumptions, cost assumptions. We've heard that there are, we don't know the location, the size of the facilities, we don't know the location of the injection wells yet, there's a lot that we don't know. And yet, we hear the consultant tonight use the word "specific rates" and "exact rates", and that's just not true. And if you go forward with this, you will be in violation of Proposition 218. Let's see. Oh, in terms of Proposition 218, I'd like to know what is the mechanism for putting part of the payments on property tax and part as a rate increase? Because there's a very specific definitions and requirements for taxes and rate increases. And so if somebody could explain that to me, I would appreciate it. Oh, and in relation to bringing the citizens in on providing input on property tax versus monthly bill, if you're going to go ahead with that, at least it could be agendized. And at least, this should be a public hearing. The law requires public hearings for this kind of, you're making decisions about this rate increase. And if you take it without even providing the notice for it, I mean, there's hardly anybody here. So I'd just like for you to consider that. Thanks.
Thanks, Cynthia. David Petonte. And then Jane Heath.
Mayor and council members, my name is David Petont. I'm a resident Morro Bay, a property owner and a utility customer. I'm speaking today to support the city's proposed WRF project and the proposed rate increase to pay for it. The WRF is a vital and necessary infrastructure project for the community's future and needs to be completed within the timeframe required by the Regional Water Board. Like most of us, I don't want to pay more for my utility bills, taxes, insurance, or any other recurring living expense. However, we need to consider the benefit received from these types of payments and the possible consequences of not paying them. And no offense to any dentist in the room, but I really dislike going to the dentist. I go to my dentist's office every six months for a cleaning and whatever dental work needs to be done. I don't have dental insurance, and I pay entirely out-of-pocket for a service that I find unpleasant. I do it because it's necessary to maintain my health. Clean drinking water at the tap and sewer waste sanitation is necessary to maintain the health of our community. There is a cost for that vital service. When the infrastructure that delivers this service wears out or becomes obsolete, beneficiaries of the service need to pay the cost to replace it. I support the city's WRF project for two principal reasons, because it's a real project that can be permitted at the South Bay Boulevard site and actually could be built. And because we have reasonably clear estimates for construction costs and the monthly utility surcharge to pay for it. I urge the city council to move forward with the Proposition 218 rate increase process to fund the WRF project as soon as it is practical to do so. Also, I request that you authorize the city manager to act as your agent and submit the WIFI alone application as early as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petont. Jane Heath.
My name's Jane Heath. I am a Morro Bay resident and a business owner. I pay two water bills every month, so I have a double stake in the rates that we'll pay for the new plant. I've tried to educate myself regarding the components and the cost of replacing our worn-out sewage treatment plant. I'm also very concerned about young families and those on fixed incomes as you are. I've watched, read, and listened to this issue for 10 years. I reviewed the work of the Blue Ribbon Panel and thanked them for their work. They did sterling work. And the recently released rate study. I'm satisfied that the estimated surcharge is fair and affordable, and it is, as it is possible to be, knowing that the plant must be replaced. I am, however, distressed that I continue to hear and receive on my doorstep information that is inaccurate and misleading from folks who desire to derail a Proposition 218 vote that would allow us to go forward with the rate structure developed by experts and validated by the Blue Ribbon Panel. Tonight, I want to focus on one thing I keep hearing, that in my experience, both generally and on this issue, is flat wrong, that we are in no peril from the RWQCB fines if we do not approve the rate increase. Several years ago, I sat in the chambers of the District Court of Appeal in Ventura and heard the oral arguments and the colloquy with the justices concerning the appeal of the RWQCB fines that were levied when Los Osos did exactly what some members of this community want us to do, turn down the Prop 218 rate increase. They point, the justices pointed out that the RWQCB made it absolutely clear that Los Osos had to continue taking steps toward building their plant, or there would be fines. But the citizens just defeated the 218 proposal anyway. That is exactly the message they have given Morro Bay regarding our non-compliant plant. We will be patient unless we see that you are doing things that delay or endanger efficient development. Make no mistake, we will receive RWQCB fines if we do not approve the rate increase. Here's what I'm worried about, though. We spent years going down a path of, let's keep the plant where it is. There are those who would like to continue that. My family and fixed-income neighbors can live with the current rate increase, but we cannot live with an increase that is caused by an irresponsible step that causes lost valuable time and have to start over. It's simply a risk we don't have time to take. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. I need help with the timer, if you could, Lori. And I think RWQCB is the Regional Water Quality Control Board? Okay, sorry, that was my question for Lori. I keep hearing the beep, so I'm, okay, all right, we'll do our best. Sorry, I don't, I'm just trying, I'm trying to, okay, all right, thanks.
He's short, he can't see the lights.
Eric, Eric Four is next, and then Dawn Beatty. And Dawn, if you need help with a microphone, we can get that microphone over there. If we can get that microphone for Dawn, for her, please? Thank you. Welcome, Eric.
Good evening, mayor and council. I want to talk about this graph that's on page 26 and 27. For the purposes that I want to talk about, it doesn't matter which one you're looking at. The way the city steps up the charges evaluates only one thing, water usage. This is grossly unfair, because, I don't know about you, but when I turn on my sink, that water runs down the drain. You know, when I turn on the shower, the water runs down the drain. The water we use is directly proportional to the amount of sewer we use. Therefore, the sewer should be charged proportionally, just like water is. This whole graph should be biased towards the left end of it, in that people that use less water, less sewage, should pay less. This green, these green bars should be, should start small and get bigger, just like the blue ones do. As well, this surcharge business ought to also be evaluated on our usage. We're talking about personal use of water and sewage. Why should we all be charged, well, at least in three cases here, at the same rate? It's just not, it's just not fair, and it doesn't honestly encourage conservation. The graph should start small on the left end, and it should curve upward to the right end. And that's all I got to say.
All right, Eric, thank you. Dawn Beatty?
Hello, my name is Dawn Beatty, and I live in Morro Bay. I just wanted to say that I support what you, the councilors, are doing, especially doing it under a microscope. And everything Jane and Dave said, they said it beautifully. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, for helping her out with that. Next one up, Steve Stevens. And then Betty Winholtz. That's the last speaker slip I have, in case anybody wants to speak.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, come on up.
I didn't know, is there any way to, any way to put this on a, on a board? The Morro Bay Fact Sheet from 2015?
If you can give it over here, we don't have an overhead with us today. Is that right, AGP? We don't have one today, sorry.
Well, I'll just, okay, well, can I hold off before I start here?
Sure.
Great. All right, so my name is Steve Stevens. Again, this is a Morro Bay, city of, city of Morro Bay Water and Sewer Fact Sheet from The last question on here specifically states, "The proposed maximum rates provide adequate revenue to build WWTP without," in italics, "without," in italics, "Cayucus." This is from 2015. It's Morro Bay Fact Sheet. We're talking about credibility here. Were Cayucus to rejoin the Morro Bay project, sewer rates supporting the construction of the WWTP would be lower than if Morro Bay builds without Cayucus, even though construction costs without Cayucus would be less? I'd just like an acknowledgement that this exists. This is from the city of Morro Bay, stating, again, without Cayucus, that there's adequate funds. Pertaining to some questions that came up for me here, what happens if the WIFI funding is not approved or delayed? I haven't heard anything to that regard, in that regard. Previous estimates included contingency. I don't know what type of contingencies you've got here, if I can get an answer on that. Also, I submitted a couple of days ago, issues relative to Black and Beach and vetting that was done and submitted to the city attorney. And so I'd like to get a response on that. My prime concern having to do with two suits, one from the city of Antioch, and one regarding a decision to award a municipality in Florida $36 million. Is that me? Oh, okay, thank you. So the reason that concerns me, obviously, has to do with miscalculations, has to do with performance, problems and defects and misrepresentations. So if you could, if you could please answer that, I would appreciate it. I'm primarily concerned also about the impact on businesses in the community and our, and quickly, our fixed income, our low income, and primarily mobile homeowners that haven't really had a voice. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thanks, Steve. Betty Winholtz? And that's the last speaker slip I have, and I would close public comment after that. Thank you.
Betty Winholtz, excuse me, Betty Winholtz. I see that Sharon from the, I don't know what the office is called these days, but where they, she interfaces with the homeless is here in the audience. where she interfaces with the homeless is here in the audience, and I don't know if you're going to be asking her questions or want to know, but I want to acknowledge that she's here and she's a valuable resource about how this will impact low-income and fixed-income people. I want to address a couple of content things and then a couple of procedural things. First, thank you for the answers I received today regarding the questions that I submitted. I have two follow-up questions to two of those questions. One of them had to do with the One Water question, and I think I must not have worded it well. My question was, was the bill to pay for the One Water Study part of the $10 million? So that's yet to come out of there? Or does the $10 million represent what's left after we pay for the One Water Study? So I apologize for that confusion. My other question had to do with the pieces that are part of the onsite facility, and several of them were identified. But the thing about double buildings and solar in particular, which are mentioned in the report but weren't mentioned in the response to my question, I wonder if that could be clarified, if we're still looking at solar out there, if that's part of the pieces or not. And then procedurally, this happened at the last meeting, and I mentioned it to the mayor, and it's happened again tonight, that you've got, public comment comes first before you all get to ask your questions and interact with the staff. And yet, that's been reversed without asking the council for permission to rearrange the agenda. And you may have done that, I assume, thinking that would be helpful for the audience to hear your questions, but for some of us, we want to make our statements and get out of here. And so we would appreciate if that could happen, that you follow the order of business, not change it in the midst of the meeting. And then the other procedural is to reaffirm or agree with what Ms. Holly said about taking action tonight, that this is not a hearing, you did not announce that you were going to be making these decisions in the description of the staff report. And so are you going to be making those decisions, or will you be making them at a regular city council meeting to come? Thank you. Oh, it's a yellow light. Let me add one little thing, and that's regarding Mr. Heding's comment about looking at the past. And maybe, you know, you all have talked about that before, and I have responded to you, having been on council during that time period, that we had reasons not to, and we aren't supposed to, raise rates when we already have money to cover our bills. And to go back and look at that, maybe helps people feel better about increasing the rates a lot right now, or maybe it gives a place to blame, but I think you need to let the past rest, and we need to move on. Thanks.
Thanks, Betty. And with that, we'll close public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Couple of questions for staff on this. First one up, Joe, on the noticing of the meeting, particularly the way it's noticed and what actions we're taking. I know we continue to hear noticing and then public hearing versus a business item or special meeting, if you can help us with that. And then there is one about the Prop 218 requirement from Ms. Holly, but both of those, if you recall, if you can help us with those, please.
Okay. First, with regard to the noticing or the agenda title and the information on the agenda, the way the agenda is set up legally provides you with the opportunity to make decisions on the rate study, the rate analysis, and what you want to bring forward to the next meeting, which would be when the notice would be given for the 218. So I don't see a Brown Act violation. With regard to the 218 process, the process allows the council to put forth a rate based on analysis that is given by professionals to determine that the rate is not more than what reasonably would be necessary to serve the needs that are being provided by the rates. You'll see that you have that analysis now. You're going to get more of that analysis, and the rate, the notice that goes out, if you choose to send a notice out, is going to be very specific in what the rate is, what the rate's based on, how the rate's calculated.
And to continue on that, can you give some examples on other 218 examples in cities that have done water rates or other examples that compare to what we're doing right now?
It may be better to use the resource of Alec to answer that question.
Certainly. I don't know if this is coming in context of, hey, we don't know what every cent's going to cost for the injection wells that's going to be here or there. You know, no one ever has exact, perfect information, but for the bulk of the cost, I mean, you're already working with the design-build, you've already got these proposals in hand. So now's the first time there's any, like, high level of confidence in the cost compared to the conjecture that may have been done in the past. In terms of what other agencies doing, there are many other agencies in California going through exactly what you're going through now. There's a lot of treatment plants. They might not be as old as yours, but they were put in, you know, 30, 40 years ago. They need to be rebuilt. They don't meet the new permit requirements. They're just old. Not in all cases are they located right on the coast and need to be moved, so that's an extra wrinkle to yours. But so for some of these agencies, they have done the exact same thing that is being proposed here. They want to get their rates in place in advance, even though they haven't built, you won't even know the cost of the project till it's built, but they're doing the same thing. The City of San Mateo, for example, is looking at $800 million of improvements to its collection system and rebuilding a treatment plant that's going to be like $400 to $500 million. Last year, they did like a 36% rate increase, and then this year, they went out with a series of 5, 15% rate increases phased in. Their project's not bid out yet. You're far ahead of them, and that's considered a legitimate thing to do. They're getting their rates in place to support reasonable estimates of the facilities. That's all anyone can do, because I can't even tell you what your staffing cost is going to be four years down the line or two years down the line. You never have perfect information. Another agency, Silicon Valley Clean Water, is rebuilding its treatment plant. They've been doing this for a few years. Again, this is a project that's, you know, another $800 million project for a big force made in a treatment plant, and all the member agencies there, well in advance of this, went out with their own Prop 218 notices based on estimated future project costs and started phasing in their rates many years in advance. In some cases, it was like eight to 10 years in advance, because they didn't want to, you know, they didn't want to be caught with a huge, massive rate increase at the end of the line. So what you're doing is similar to what, I can go on and on and on and on, but what many other agencies have done, in fact, you're even more down the line with being able to narrow down your costs. You've actually got your proposals back from the design-build process already. And the reality is, the other thing is, you know, maybe I'll just leave it there. The hope is that everything is exact, but none of the costs will come in exact, but I think you're going to find, when we looked at the last rate study, that we're pretty darn close. Hopefully, we'll be equally as close this time as well. But, you know, maybe in the future, if you're able to get the cost down, you don't need to fully implement the, you know, some future rate increases, the other side of the coin, too. But certainly, that's not a Prop 218 violation, because this is all very reasonable, and it's been done many, many times. In fact, just about every time.
All right. Thanks, Eric. And then there's another question Mr. For was asking about. Can you explain the graph and the surcharge? You know, there's the, did you understand the question about water usage versus the surcharge?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was on page 26.
Sure. This is a, this right here. Yeah, and I think the suggestion was made that, hey, we want volumetric sewer rates, similarly of volumetric water rates. And, you know, there are some agencies that do have volumetric, or maybe they're 80% fixed, 20% volumetric, or 50/50. But typically, in California, most agencies have fixed sewer charges, because what you're paying for is the capacity in the system needed to serve a single-family home, for example. Whether you flush once or 100 times, the cost of operating that system really don't fluctuate that month. A lot of it's, you know, maintaining the capital, the capacity in the system. If your flows go up and down, or to double one month and go down half the next month, your costs aren't really changing much. You maybe, you know, I'll defer to the engineering experts, but, you know, maybe it's a few, less than 5% of the costs are going to go up and down for, you know, chemicals and electricity and stuff like that. So most agencies in California have fixed rates. The other thing I wanted to mention is, when you're going out to borrow funds for, you know, a substantial capital project like this, the folks who are lending you the money want reasonable assurances that you're going to have the cash in hand to repay them. And everyone who's in California has seen what has happened with some agencies in recent years, if they borrowed money on their water enterprise, and all of a sudden, the drought came and their water revenues were cut in half. It's affected the credit quality of some agencies. It's a question that gets asked there by Standard and Poor's, you know, so by, State Revolving Fund is going to look at this as well. So there needs to be reasonable assurance that you're going to have a fixed source of revenues coming in for what is going to be a fixed level of debt service payment. So there's a few reasons why you have fixed sewer charges. It doesn't mean it's the only way. I certainly work with some other agencies that have volumetric components, but, you know, it's probably three-quarters of agencies in California have the similar type of charge.
Thanks, Alex. And then there's another question on the 2015 fact sheet. I don't know if you caught all that, Rob, now?
Yes, we do. I found the fact sheet on our website also. It was written in 2015 for what I suppose was true in 2000. I didn't provide input into the fact sheet. So it was based on the project and the knowledge of the project at that point in time. They may have been believed to be facts at that time, but like we've told you, those costs for that project were based on conceptual designs, not even, we didn't have a facilities master plan. It was on to get the rates pointed in the right direction, and I think the rate notice that went out even talked about the same thing, that should the project change? And the project costs more, the rates will need to do a separate Prop 218 notice.
And to follow up on what Mr. Levick just said, I took the opportunity to go back to the notice that actually went out in the 215 notice for the 218 process then, and I just want to read a sentence that's in the notice that went out to the public. "If the facility ends up costing significantly more than estimated, or state-subsidized funding is not available, then the city may need to reevaluate rate increases in future years." So the notice that went out made it clear that if costs went up, rates may need to change.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. And then there is another question about the One Water Bill. Did you get that question from Betty? Can you answer that?
So that's for the study that's going on right now. It's built into our current budget, and we'll end up finishing paying that sometime later this summer. So we have some carryover money that we've carried over for that project, and it is within our current budget.
And then there is a question about additional...
I think the question was, we have a $700 and something thousand contract with Corolla Engineers. Was that, is that part of the $10 million?
Right.
Is that, is that the question?
Yes.
The $10 million does not include that, because that's already been budgeted for. We're going to be paying that out of existing budgeted amounts.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there is also a question. I think because of the terminology we've been using in terms of rates and surcharges, there's a confusion as to whether or not something's a tax or not. Whenever you use words, it can always be confusing. Think of the surcharge as a flat rate, because that's what it is. It's for several years, a set amount of money is going to be charged to cover the cost of the WRF, to cover the cost of the implementation, installation, and operation of the WRF.
Okay.
And putting it on the property tax is allowed under the California Health and Safety Code as a method of collection, not as a tax.
Okay. So we have questions for council in our presentation. The question is, front-loading versus phase-in? Property tax versus a monthly bill? Authorize the city manager to submit the WFI loan? And that's what we have presented by staff in front of us. So with that, we can start with deliberation and comments, and I'll start to my left with Mr. Davis. There you go. Good job, Matt.
The first question, front-load versus phase-in? The difference that I see is that the phase-in saves $30 less in the first year, up $19 less in the second year, $8 less in the third year, and then rises to only $3 more in subsequent years. I would rather do a phase-in to help people become, to help people build their budgets to accept the increase. And by the time we get out to the 22, 23-year, that amount will, may well be adjusted as actual expenditures change anyway. So I would rather start with the phase-in. As to the monthly bill versus property tax, I would rather do monthly bill. I think that our ratepayers deserve to see what they are paying every month toward the WRF. I appreciate that we have, will have a designated WRF surcharge so that we are completely transparent in what we are paying for the facility. And certainly, I do want to authorize the city manager to apply for the WFI loan as soon as possible.
Can I make one quick comment? The staff report has different numbers on the phase-in. Just wanted to make sure that was understood. Alex was completing his analysis the same day, so the number, the number should reflect is, the first year would be, the phase-in would be 167, second year would be 180, and then the full, the full increase to 194 in the third year. So slight difference, but just wanted to note that.
Thank you for that clarification. The amounts are not as favorable as I had originally thought, but for me, the principle remains the same, so I favor the phase-in.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
In terms of the first item, front-loaded versus phase-in, the other day at the community meeting, I do believe on Monday, there was a number of people from PWEB that were saying that the front-load would be a very, had some validity to it. But however, and part of it, that night, I was thinking, you know, I think, you know, that's true. You bite the bullet first, and then you deal with, you know, you just accept that going forward. But however, considering the timeframe that this project will go, will be on from inception to when it turns on, we will, if we, the phase-in approach, will be able to take it easier on our ratepayers to get used to the process and to adjust appropriately. So with that, I agree with Red, the phase-in would be better. Property tax versus monthly bill? I agree, as when we were talking about it tonight and listening to our commentary. The property tax is intriguing. However, I'm very leery and scared for our ratepayers who are renting. I would not want to see people who have fixed incomes, limited incomes, being taken advantage of in some way. And so the monthly bill would be better with the surcharge on it. I do believe going forward, as much information as possible to our ratepayers is going to help this process go through. So I'm in favor of the monthly bill. And yes, I do authorize our city manager.
Thanks, Matt. John?
Thank you. Two questions. First, I'm in favor of front. First, I'm in favor of front loading. It saves in the long term $4.3 million in debt service. I think front loading over a period of four years, given the minimal dollars we're talking about, to an end line rate pair would not be significant, but I do believe the, the avoidance of $4.3 million of debt service is very significant. So, I do support front loading. With regard to the property tax rolls versus the individual user or owner, I support property tax roll billing. I think it minimizes the burden to staff administratively. It guarantees 100% collection with no, no issues with our current staff in terms of the amount of work that they would have to do to try to collect those debts because it's guaranteed by the county. Cash flow is minimally affected, I believe. I don't think it's significant enough to cause a problem. And I think because we have a significant number of out of town owners, we're only talking about the incremental cost being added to the tax roll. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So, it's just the $41, not the whole bill. So, the, the community user still pays the bill based upon usage, but the assessment, if you will, for the WRF capital project, I believe should be, be placed on the property tax rolls in order to maximize out of town owners' responsibility to pay for infrastructure. So, I, I support that.
And how about WIFIA?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Absolutely?
Sorry about that. And with regard to the WIFIA loan, WIFIA loan, I've supported it all along. I absolutely agree that staff should move forward and apply for the WIFIA loan. I spoke about the cost savings and the, the way that it's funded. I spoke to people in Washington directly, the EPS with regard, EPA with regard to the issue. And being one of 12 communities in the nation selected to get this, we are very advantaged to have this low interest loan, and so I highly support it.
Thanks, John. Marlaus?
Yeah. Okay. On the first issue, front loading versus phase in, I came into the meeting on the fence thinking I could go either way, but I come down with my colleague to my left. I think we actually should front load it and thinking about it, the overall cost over the 30 years would be an additional $1,080 to $1,260 to the rate payer if we in fact don't front load. So, that's a significant amount of money. And I believe that to the rate payer, when they get their bill, they're going to be shocked no matter what it is. And so, we might as well only shock them once and not three times. So, I, I'm, I'm in favor of front loading. On the property tax versus the monthly bill, I came down on the monthly bill. And these are some of my rationale for that. I believe that it's more transparent if we put it on the monthly bill. I believe that all rate payers will then see exactly how much we're charging for the new WRF. I think that the utility discount program is a crucial part of our funding for this and it's not as available if you put it on the property tax rolls. In fact, I would like to revisit our decision to only have an open enrollment period of one time. So, I actually do support the monthly bill. And I would just like to add some comments about something that you didn't ask for, but this came up at the joint meeting and that concerned the difference between the staff recommendation and the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendation on when we should time the 218. And I simply wanted to say that I fully support the staff recommendation because even though I'm very appreciative of what the Blue Ribbon Commission did and all their hard work, I don't believe that we would gain that much information in one month to substantially affect the current rates. And I do want to point out that I really believe that our rates will actually come in lower because if we can get the state revolving fund, fund financing, if we can get some grants, we are going to be able to lower those rates and we now have the, the vehicle for doing it by annual rate review. So, that if we look at the revenues and expenses and we are, we don't need to raise the rates that much, we will not raise the rates, rates that much, and that is my commitment as a council member. And then obviously on the last question, I obviously agree with everyone. We want to move forward with the WIFIA loan. That's a, it's a tremendous opportunity for us to reduce our rates and we must take advantage of it. So, I authorize the city manager, spend the $25,000 and get it done.
Thanks, Marlaus. I'll start backwards. I'll agree with the WIFIA loan and as far as authorizing, city manager to proceed. So, we have unanimous support on the WIFIA loan application. And then I'll go back starting from the other end as far as the phase in versus front load. I would agree on the front load. Any way you slice that, we're going to be dealing with that, but I think over the long run is, is probably the best strategy from a cost standpoint in the long term. And I was also a little bit split on the property tax and the monthly bill. I don't know if it actually makes too much difference as far as transparency goes, being on the property tax versus on the bill. I, I think it's, one could, I guess one could argue if they're renters, they may not, may not see the surcharge, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's not transparent in that way. I'd be more supportive of the property tax myself and I guess that's where I'll just go ahead and go with that, understanding where we're at, but that, that leaves, you know, a majority of council that would be supporting the monthly bill. And I think we've covered all three of those. And so, basically it looks like we've got support to, and I'm just going back through my math and I was, so it looks like there was support, a majority of support to do front loading from council member Heding, council member McPherson, and then Mayor Irons. And so, that, just for the record, I'm just restating things and then if council has any more remarks. And then as far as monthly bill versus property, we have monthly bill. So, that'd be Mr. Da, council member Davis, council member Mackiewetzki, and council member McPherson to support the monthly bill with Mr. Heding and myself on property tax. So, we're going to the monthly bill. WIFIA, we've got unanimous support there. And I think that covers all the asks.
Mr. Mayor, we actually need a motion for the authorization.
And we need a motion for the authorization for the WIFIA. So, I'd make a motion to authorize the city manager to apply for the WIFIA loan.
Second. Second.
So, we have a motion by Mayor Irons, second by Ms. McPherson. And any further discussion? None? Or Matt? Yeah? On the WIFIA motion?
No.
Okay. Then, okay.
Well, then. We can vote for, if you don't, can we vote for that? Then I want a discussion.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Discussion on the motion? None?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Comments? Matt?
The one comment I would like to point out with the front loaded versus phase in, and Marlaus, you made the wonderful observation in terms of moving ahead with this project with the, especially with the SRF funding and/or grants, as this cost for this project, as we go through it, as it can be lowered somewhat. So, understanding, and John, your point about the $4.3 million that we could save over the 35 years of this project in terms of doing front loaded. However, I, in terms of the time component, looking ahead in the next five years as this project is reaching completion, if we do the phase in project, knowing that we could have adjustments along the road, that could lessen the economic burden per month during that buildup as we're looking for other types of monies. So, that's one, an additional point I'd like to point out.
I'll just, if there are any other closing comments, I just, I just wanted to make one. Matt? Or go ahead, Red, if you have any closing comments.
I wondered if we wanted to provide any input to the city manager about the July 10th meeting?
Absolutely.
Do you want me to do it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I think, I think that's, we actually made some comments on what our options might be for that.
Just as my input, I think it would be beneficial if the city manager were prepared to, on July 10th, to open the 45-day hearing period.
Okay. Any other?
No discussion, I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I asked for clarif, asked for clarification. I'm not sure I understood what you meant. The 45-day period starts when the notice goes out. So, it won't, so I'm not sure what you were asking.
Was the city manager sure what I was asking?
I think what, what you're, in the presentation, we set a tentative date for July 10th to be the discussion to authorize the notification. So, you're saying remove the tentative and make, be prepared to have that discussion on the 10th. Is that accurate?
Be prepared to announce the opening of the 45-day period.
That would take council action, of course, so we would agendize that.
I, I think what your attorney was mentioning is you don't technically open the, just to be clear, you don't technically open the 45-day period. You'd authorize staff to get the notice out and then it's not till the notice is technically mailed that the 45 days would start. That's, you want to get that process going, just to be clear.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification and I agree.
Okay. Marlaus?
I don't have any more comments.
Okay. I just, I just want to make a, one comment in regard to some public comment and, and not necessarily to respond necess, to that, but overall the process of getting to where we are, and there was a comments about, comment about a legacy project and the legacy of the debt. As we've gone through this, and I think what was really enlightening for me and I, hopefully for the rest of the community during our One Water presentation, was our potential water portfolio and our water, future water demands and our future water needs. And so, absolutely, as we think about this project, this project as a water reclamation facility will be a part of our water portfolio. And if, if we're not looking at our future water needs, certainly state water is not, based on the study that we reviewed with the One Water Plan, is, is not going to meet our needs if we don't, if we don't plan for it. So, I, I think as many in the community, and I know this is, this is one for all of us to, to make the decisions and wrestle with, and I know it's been a long process. Certainly getting through this, this project and getting to today and where we might go forward, but water is one of the key components of this. And so, I would, as we wrestle with perhaps debt, one of the things we want to be prepared for is having safe drinking water in the future, and this is one of those components. It's, it is a legacy project in that way. And with that, just thanks staff for getting us to this point. Those are all the comments and if there's not any other comments from council, then we can, yeah.
I also, I know council member McPherson thanked the Blue Ribbon Committee, but I, I also want to thank John Martin, Homer Alexander, Barbara Spagnola, and Joan Solu, who are the members of that that put in a tremendous number of hours and time and effort to really refine. And I think what you have before you is a very different set of information and documents than we did in 2015 in terms of inform, being informed with specifics regarding costs. And I, I very much appreciate their efforts along with the other advisory councils that have weighed in and of course, staff time and our consultants for, for the good work that you've done. So, thank you so much for that.
And Marlaus?
Well, just one last thing I'd like to say. You know, when we put a pause on this project in April of 2017, the council really shifted gears and said, we have got to get the costs of this project down. And in doing so, we revisited sites that we had previously looked at, including the two west of Highway 1 that the Coastal Commission had denied in 2013. We personally spoke with Coastal Commission staff and a Coastal Commissioner, and we asked them about the feasibility or the likelihood of our being able to put a plant on the beach, anywhere near the existing plant. And the message we received was clear. Why would the commission possibly change their mind on a unanimous decision five years later when in fact, climate change has gotten worse? So, that as far as I'm concerned, is only a delaying tactic to talk about going back. But we also exhorted them to look for lower cost alternatives. And in fact, they have done that. They've succeeded in doing that. They brought the cost of this project down substantially from that time in April of 2017. And I believe that we will get them down even lower. And I want to say, getting the rates lower is a good thing. It's not something to complain about that the numbers keep changing because we're trying to get the rates lower. And that's what we will succeed in doing in the long run. So, thanks.
All right.
Council member McPherson, did you want to ask the council to reconsider? I heard you mentioned something about reconsidering.
I did. The utility discount program, we very quickly passed that as part of our meeting, I think, early in June as a special meeting. And we limited the enrollment period to one month. And I would like us to reconsider that decision. I don't think that's a sufficient amount of time. I think we have sufficient funds on tap and we could at least extend that period or have two periods. So, I would like us to reconsider that. It is part of the, yes, as an agenda item.
She's asking to bring it back on another agenda.
As an agenda item, but it is related to rates. The utility discount part, program does help with the rate structure. So, it's related to the topic of this meeting.
And as far as proceeding, future agenda items, do we need to wait for a regular council meeting when it's noticed as a future agenda item?
Okay.
So, at the next council meeting in July, our next council meeting, under future agenda items, we can do that. Pardon me?
To do it.
So, you're saying even, even now, we can do that?
Now, you can have a consensus to bring it back at a future meeting. Yes.
Okay. I, I would agree to do that.
Do you want to have a specific meeting you want to be brought back to?
I didn't think about that.
We can work that part out. So, basically, do we have a consensus or, I'm, I'm looking for, so Red, Matt? Looks like unanimous consensus to bring that item back for future discussion? Okay. With that, that'll conclude our meeting tonight. Just want to say one more time, thanks to the community for coming out and thanks for staff, and we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.